I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Tuesday morning, June 25th, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Huntous. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
To his left, Randy Spangler, taking care of us today. Randy, good morning. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne, good morning. To Candace's right, we have Keegan Shea, Deputy County Attorney, and Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. Good morning, gentlemen. And in the front, just on the other side of the rail from us, is a table with agendas and a sign-in sheet. So we'd like people to sign in, please. We have a good record of who's attended our meeting. Before you leave, anyway, that would be great. We have no consent action items today, so we'll move on to item number three on the agenda, which is fiscal year 2024 alcohol tax updates. Good morning, Mr. Cornwell.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Frank Cornwell, County CFO. I'm filling in for Misty Edwards today. She had a training. I get the pleasure of introducing to the Commission the state-approved substance abuse providers. These providers receive fiscal year 2024 alcohol tax funds. The funds are pass-through funds from Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services and are used for treatment, rehabilitation, prevention of alcoholism, and chemical dependency. The agencies are here to update you on how the county funds are used during the fiscal year.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, we've had kind of an annual tradition of folks giving us an update and letting us know how things are going. So we'll just start down the row here. Boyd Andrew, Community Services. Good morning. If you just introduce yourself and your title for the record, that'd be grand, and then you have the floor. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Heather Huntoff. I'm the Clinical Director with Boyd Andrew Community Services. My update is just to kind of give you a little bit of an idea what we did last year and what we've continued to do.
She's asking if your microphone's on. You got the green light? Yeah, you're okay. Would you, since you stopped already, we interrupted. Do we get to spell your last name for the record for us?
Absolutely. It's H-U-N-D-T-O-F-T.
Thank you. Yes, wouldn't have gotten that right.
It's a hard one. Okay, so Boyd Andrew Community Services, as most of you know, has been providing services for both substance use and mental health treatment, as well as the prevention and education for DUI and other drug offenses in the community for 50 years. We have a staff that is very dedicated to providing these services, and with the alcohol tax funds, we will be able to continue to help our community. Any alcohol tax funding awarded to BACS will continue to support our outpatient, our intensive outpatient, and our residential treatment programs. This funding allows for the utilization of one of the lowest sliding B-scales in Montana for uninsured clients. It also allows us to provide free services to the county residents and jail inmates despite their ability to pay. Last year, BACS wrote off about $300,000 due to Medicaid paying at a lower rate than private insurance and allowed us to continue to serve our most atneed in the community. Any alcohol tax fundings that we get will also go to support our continued education of staff and the evidence-based treatments and help us to meet the expectations of quality assurance audits as they are needed. We offer a variety of groups and other educational opportunities for our clients. We work with probation and parole, as well as CPS. We also partner with the First Judicial District Treatment Court, the DUI Court, and Behavior Health Court. In 2024, BACS donated approximately $60,000 worth of staff time to the local treatment courts across the board. We hope to continue that in-kind donation. However, without these alcohol tax funding, these partnerships would be impossible. So our goal for 2025 is to continue those partnerships with both our treatment courts and along with our detention centers, our Behavior Health Alliance, CPS, and anybody else who needs services in our community. We will continue to provide our batter's intervention, our anger management, our parenting groups, our moral recognition therapy, our codependency groups, and our seeking safety group, which is a trauma group. Our hope is to begin to have a counselor trained in EMDR, which is Eye Movement Decensitization and Reprocessing, which is a big form of treatment in the community, and then to continue to utilize our sober living and to continue to see the needs and monitor and make changes as appropriate. So we appreciate your continued support.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the update. Commissioners, any questions for Boyd Andrew?
About how many, and this doesn't have to be precise, but give us a ballpark figure of how many people you have worked with in the last, during this fiscal year?
Absolutely. So we did break it down. I have it in our different programs. So our intensive outpatient program, it says we served about 82 clients, and they received about 2,500 services. In our outpatient program, we had 88 participants and provided about 1,050 services. We served 28 in our residential treatment program. We also provided, I would say, it looks like approximately 250 evaluations for mental health and addiction and also for DUI assessments throughout the year.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for being here today. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Updates always good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
You bet. Inner Mountain, be next. Good morning.
Hello, I am Dr. Megan Fox. I am the Clinical Director at Inner Mountain. So I oversee our services in Helena, in Kalispel, and telehealth. Myself, along with our clinical supervisors, oversee our outpatient services for treatment, for substance use treatment, both in Helena as well as in Kalispel. So first, I want to thank you guys so much for this alcohol tax funds. I am new to Inner Mountain. I started last August, and this funds that we receive was one of the first things I was briefed on. It is really important to allow us to do the services that we do, both in Helena, but has opened up our ability to serve the entire state of Montana as well. So through this money, we continue to serve this community and train new clinicians. In the last year, we have done 129 assessments for substance use disorders. We have provided 45 outpatient clients with specific substance use disorders. That's 195 individual services between those 45 clients. More than that, we are focused predominantly with children and adolescents and families. So we have served 608 unique clients through that, through 856 services. Over 70% of our client population is Medicaid predominant, and we serve between ages of 5 and 70, 5 and 70 years old. In the last year, we also provided eight education classes on alcohol and substance use disorders with 43 participants in that. We also have provided training and sponsorship for substance use disorder and licensed addictions counseling, providing licensure through internships, recruiting, and training of the next generation of license. So through this money, we have focused predominantly on collaboration, treatment, and prevention. And so treatment, as was mentioned by Boyd Andrews, is we focus on co-occurring treatment. So we focus on how substance use and mental health come into play together. We focus on integrated co-occurring treatment through our modality of relationship-based. Many people have heard of Inner Mountain, that we provide hope and healing through healthy relationships, and that is at our forefront of all of the treatment models we do, including substance use. And so in our substance use treatment, we pair mental health, substance use, through relationship building. So the predominant majority of our clients who are in substance use disorder treatments are also seeing other parts of our facility in med management groups, as well as family therapy in that. We also focus on prevention, and so this is a huge piece of us with our kids and adolescents. We know that the statistics and rates of substance use across our younger kiddos is continuing to increase nationwide, statewide, as well as countywide. And so we focus predominantly, whether you're in our substance use disorder treatment or not, we continue to serve these populations. Last, we focus on collaboration. We are stronger together as a community. And so Inner Mountain interacts with and attends the Youth Connection Coalition, which is meetings and work groups, activities that work to prevent substance use, tobacco, and alcohol use. We also hold the community meeting at Inner Mountain every Tuesday morning throughout the school year, which has our SROs at our schools, Community and Family Services, School Assistant Principals and Principals, as well as probation. And this is a time for all of us in the community to come together and talk about the kids, family, and teens that are struggling and how we can best support them. We also maintain very close connections with our pediatric and primary care clinics for referral sources for adolescents and families that are struggling. We are also heavily integrated into our school systems, providing school-based therapy. We are involved in East Helena, and with their recent events at the end of the school year, we were heavily part of providing support to the families involved and impacted with that. We are very appreciative of these funds and how they continue to allow us to serve, and so I appreciate your time and letting us present.
Thank you very much and really appreciate your time as well. Commissioners, questions? Just a comment you reminded me, and you don't have to step there unless you want to, but at the outset, I should have mentioned this, and that is that we, these tax dollars come in via sales of alcohol. I think Frank mentioned that. And we, Lewis and Clark County gets allocated our portion of that, which is, give or take, it's now nearing a couple hundred thousand dollars, and then we distribute that out to the community, and that tax is for the purpose of treatment and programming for addressing alcohol and substance use. So we go through a process, which we just did last week, in terms of percentage, the percentages out there. And then what we try to do is work with both adult and adolescent programming and organizations in the community, nonprofits. So we appreciate you being here. You just reminded me that we probably need to do a little bit more background for those folks who might be watching today or those in the room. So anyway, it's a great program, and I'm glad that we have the opportunity to pass these dollars along. Folks are wondering why you pay alcohol tax. This is where it goes, and this is one of the places it goes, anyway, and I think it's a good use. So appreciate you being here today. Thank you. And we'll call up our next guest, which is YWCA. Yes. Good morning. Yeah, if it's green.
Yeah, thank you. That's what my question was. I appreciate that.
Well, I did respond and said if it's green.
It was a little late on the uptake. I am really appreciative of the department that just decided that they are going to have a Who Wore It Better, a green dress competition.
You have backup.
I will win. Okay, and let me start over then. Hi, my name is Jennifer Gersky. I am the Executive Director of YWCA Helena. First, I want to apologize that our Clinical Director is not here. She had a family emergency last night and was unable to attend, so I will be filling in. You have before you our proposal, so I'm not going to read over that proposal. And I am going to uplift a couple of key points in that proposal to you and then explain how we utilize really myriad of funds to create a holistic wraparound program that is demonstrably successful. In 2023, we provided over 6,000 nights of shelter. In 2023, we provided 3,156 clinical services. These are separated from the wraparound services that we offer. In our clinical services, we offer therapeutic groups, educational groups, parenting groups, a licensed addiction counselor, three co-occurring mental health and LAC counselors. The modalities that we serve in our clinical are EMDR, brain spotting, child-parent psychotherapy, parent-child interactive therapy, and we also offer family modalities through child and family therapy. In an average week, we serve 106 individuals in our services. YWCA Helena has really grown in the last five years to address the very issues that the alcohol tax proposal seeks to address. We have taken a family approach to substance use disorder. YWCA Helena's mission is to prevent homelessness and to provide safe and supportive services, safe and supportive housing to women and children who are experiencing homelessness. I think that all of the ways that we have chosen to operationalize that mission coincide and directly respond to the proposal. Alcohol tax funds for us support unfunded programs or underfunded programs. We are 100% Medicaid-funded in our clinical programs. In 2022, the state, through administrative rule, decided to cut level of service funding in the areas where YWCA funds works. We are a 2.1 level substance use disorder treatment center, and that means that it's fully outpatient, but it's intensive. So it's an IOP program, providing nine to 15 hours per individual who qualify for IOP. In 2022, the state underfunded this IOP program by cutting reimbursements by $100 per week per individual. It has left us 22% underfunded and an annual gap of $150,000 for Medicaid recipients, which is 100% of our population. This is where the alcohol tax fills in. We surely have more services than a Medicaid rate or any other type of reimbursement services provide. We are 50% grant-funded. 50% of an almost $2 million operating budget is grant-funded. 25% of our entire operations are funded by Medicaid. And the other 25% generous donors in our community that support the mission to prevent homelessness and to do it in a holistic way. When we did a study on women who had graduated, the Wings Program stands for Women Initiating New Growth and Stability. When we tracked women who had graduated from our program with a clinical recommendation at 36 months, so that's three years out, after folks had graduated Wings, 80% of them were still successfully walking in their recovery and walking independently and fully employed. They all still had the children if CPS was involved and children were reunified. An average length of stay in our program, that includes, when I say full wraparound, housing, education, education groups such as budgeting, parenting. We have evidence-based practices in clinical modalities, but also in parenting practices and parenting educational groups. We have financial advisors come in for budgeting. We know that when we transition a woman into the community, she's still going to need support. So 30% of those that we graduate into the community remain with our clinical services 12 to 24 months after they graduate. For moms who are currently parenting, whether that is children that they bring with them or for children that are CPS-reunified, the average length of stay in our clinical program and our housing program is 17 months. Medicaid pays for 120 days. If you are a non-parent, your program with us is 11 months. Medicaid pays for 120 days. We are 100% Medicaid relied, rely on Medicaid, but obviously you heard in my budget that it also only pays 25% of our clinical program. We are collaborators with the Fuse Project out of St. Pete's. We sit on the Board of RAM, which is Recovery Residence of Montana. We have a clinician that sits on the Board of Behavioral Health for the state of Montana, and we currently have a scholarship recipient as a clinician who is earning her certificate, an early and infant childhood mental health consultation. We have a therapeutic childcare where three different types of therapeutic therapies are provided onsite. Behavioral health for every child in our care, physical therapy, speech therapy, and occupational therapy. 50% of the kiddos in our childcare are parents with substance use disorder. We utilize this therapeutic childcare as a linkage into family dynamic and a family modality of care. We are working on a correlational child recovery program. So this is children who have been, like as a Board of Crime Control would call it, a victim of their parents' use. We are working on a correlational program, once children are reunified from CPS, that they too would go through a recovery program, learning what it looks like to have a mom who is in recovery. And that's usually with adolescent and teenage children. We are creating a warm handoff through our therapeutic pre-K program into kindergarten schools, where it often takes a year or two to get an IEP or a 504 program. We are partners with treatment courts, both Drug Court and Family Treatment Court, although they're kind of shifting what their name is, but we're just going to call those two things, with CPS, the Friendship Center, Good Samaritan's Ministry, Family Promise. And we, this morning, actually received notification from the feds that we are now an approved site in a formalized partnership with PureView. The future is obviously bright as an Executive Director, but also from a clinical standpoint. When we read our mission to prevent homelessness, we have taken a clinical approach and a systemic approach to prevent homelessness, and that has taken a co-occurring substance use disorder and mental health disorder approach for the entire family. And with that, do I say I rest? Just kidding.
Leave your light on for the next.
I'm going to leave the green.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. Any comments?
If I might, please. Would you just restate your statistic on how long people stay in a healthy lifestyle?
Yeah, yeah.
I think you said something like 80.
80%, right. So when women leave, so let's say they are parenting and they take that full 17 months. With the housing crisis, we are experiencing longer than 24 months stay because we're never going to graduate a woman into homelessness, right? So we're going to make sure that childcare, housing, employment, or education are taken care of before we graduate into the community. So that's also part of that clinical model and that wraparound model. So with that in mind, when women graduate with clinical recommendations, so this is somebody who has followed the program, done all of the things that the clinic, that the clinical program necessitates, women are experiencing, it's actually higher than 80%, but 80% of them at 36 months post their graduation are successfully living in recovery and independence. So that means if a woman stayed with us 12 months, they're in 48 months of recovery, right? If a woman stays with us 24 months, they're at that five-year mark, which what science tells us is at that five-year mark. Women who have, and so we say substance use disorder because it's a chemical disorder in the brain, right? There is something where the synapses, and that's what we're trying to heal. So it is a disorder, right? Women who are in 60 months of long-term recovery have no chance of relapse higher than a general public, and that truly is what our aim is. And really, that philosophy is interrupting generational cycles of substance use, poverty, homelessness, physical, sexual abuse, and that's why we started the child program.
If I just might follow up and thank you for your long-term approach. I think it makes a wonderful difference.
Hard work. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Great. And Florence Crittenden is next. Good morning and welcome.
I had to take my jean jacket off because Jen and I were going to be, who were vesting on that. We all had the same idea this morning. Good morning, Chair Huntous and members of the Commission. My name is Carrie Kreps with Florence Crittenden. I'm the Executive Director, K-R-E-P-P-S. So happy to be up here in front of you guys. I feel like we're best friends at this point from all the time I've gotten to spend in front of you guys and really, really grateful for the opportunity. I think as I was listening today to everybody else speak, I think one of the things that is so makes my heart feel really happy and thinks that this community is doing it the right way is you're going to hear similarities between all of us of what we're talking about, things like co-occurring treatment, that homelessness and substance use and mental health do not live in a vacuum in these different silos. And I think to hear those same things, to hear about Jen talking about, you know, looking at this at a two-generational approach and talking about prevention for kids, that's the same type of work we're doing. And I think there was a point in time where we all felt that there was a competitiveness behind that of, oh, no, that's what I do. That's what my organization does. It's what all of our organizations should be doing because it is the right way to address these. And the fact that you now have four organizations up here talking about co-occurring, talking about root cause analysis for the challenges we're seeing as a community, I think is one of the best things that I have heard in a really long time, and I think we're really getting it right. And I really appreciate that the Commission is understanding the long-term approach and is supporting that and is allowing organizations to do that work in their own niche population and in the way that makes the most sense for their organization. Because clients and community members should have a choice in where they're able to receive services. And I think that what you're seeing today in front of you and a lot of pieces, the Fuse Project, so many things that are happening in this community is that we are actually coming together and we're looking at this from the same lens and putting our organization's spin, if you will, or expertise into it. So I'm really proud to be part of this group and just hearing from, you know, other providers from across the state and how challenging the alcohol tax dollars have been to access and for the counties to use. I just want to commend the Commission because I think you guys are doing a great job. I had no idea until just a couple of months ago, everybody's alcohol tax dollars didn't function the way they did here. I thought everyone got the same opportunities we've had, and that is not the case. And I really want to commend the Commission. You guys are doing a wonderful job with this, and I appreciate you looking long-term. In terms of our organization, I've gotten to speak in front of you guys a lot of times, so I'll keep that piece a little bit brief. For the alcohol tax dollars, we do focus those funds on our recovery home, so that is a 3.1. So Jen talked about her 2.1 program. We're one step above that in treatment. So we're between an outpatient and an inpatient program, often used as a step-down program from a 30- or 45-day treatment program. I really love that we have that continuum of care in our community, that clients can utilize those services when they need them and where they need them. So our services or our alcohol tax dollars mostly go to that program. We utilize those funds to support some of the family-centered aides that we have, so those are our 24/7 staff. It is a licensing requirement to have 24/7 staff, but it's at a very bare minimum, just basically to make sure the place doesn't burn down, if I'm being honest. Our family-centered aides provide full 24-hour support, transportation support, assistance with children, you know, just kind of walking through the tough parts of life, teaching our clients how to cook, some of those really basic skills. Only about 30% of that is funded by our bundled rate, similar to what Jen was talking about. So we utilize these dollars to help support those family-centered aides. We also use the funds to help support our medication management when we're working with co-occurring treatment. Medication management is very, very tricky and has to be managed very closely. We have a Medical Director, Dr. Caldwell, that's our psychiatrist, and he prescribes all medications, but actually the physical management of those is very tricky, and you have to be very, very careful. So we utilize some of these funds to help with that management on the day-to-day level of those, so we ensure that we do not mess up anyone's medication, which can severely affect treatment. In terms of numbers served in the last year, just very, we've served over 380 families last year in total in our organization throughout all of our programs, but as they relate to this funding, we serve 16 moms in our recovery home. That equates to about 5,800 bed nights. We served 23 children that were accompanied, those moms, to treatment, as well as two young moms in our youth maternity home, which we just reopened again. as well as two young moms in our youth maternity home, which we just reopened again in November. We had twenty-five unduplicated clients in our outpatient treatment services and thirteen clients that we, we supported in detox when they first came into our residential program. The one thing, I just give a kind of a quick story on the, and I think that as we talked about, the long-term approach to services, Jen did such a great job with her statistics showing that families that, and, and folks that are in treatment for a longer period of time have a higher rate of success. We have pretty similar, pretty similar statistics in our, our stays are typically eighteen to twenty-four months with the option to go into our step-down transitional living program. So they can be technically living with us for up to four years. With that, we also see a very similar, which I think that statistic is great, that you're seeing consistency in an eighty percent continuation of recovery and reunification with their children. Judge McMahon, who's our behavioral health court judge, he and I did a co-presentation for the House Bill eight seventy-two commission about a month ago. And I asked him to just come in and talk about how he's, you know, interacted with our programs. And he told a very difficult story, but I think it really paints the picture. He had two clients, two women that were DN cases, as well as in his family treatment court at the time. So they were working to get reunited with their kids. Both had pretty significant criminal drug charges. Both took an option of deferred by way of using a treatment facility. One went to thirty-day inpatient treatment. The other client came to our program, our recovery home program, both probably great choices for those clients at the time. Our program was our long-term program. And this, this young lady had really, really, really significant challenges. Really, just a horrific story. But she was with us and has been with us now for four years through our recovery home and then through our transitional living program. She regained custody of all three of her children. She was told she may see one of them again in her life and she now has custody of all three of them. She's working full-time. It's not perfect, but she's doing a great job, really, really making, making a way for herself and, and really living in her recovery with, with constant support really still from us. The other client chose to do a thirty-day treatment program. And for several different reasons, he explained, was not able to get into a long-term step-down program. Two months later, she was back in front of him and he, with charges of homicide over a drug deal gone bad. And I think that was just such a stark side-by-side comparison in real life of what long-term treatment and support can really look like and, and what happens when we don't. And I think we don't talk often enough about what happens when we don't. So just a quick story for you. I'm happy to answer any questions. But thank you guys again for, for your time and, and for taking this so seriously. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the story. Comments, questions, commissioners? Thank you. I will make a comment as you glide back to your seat or wherever you might be going. But just a general thank you to all four of you for being here and for your representation of your organizations. I think this is important that we do this each year. It's not as much about the reporting out, hey, how did you spend the money that we gave you? It's more about saying, how is our community responding to the needs out there? What are you doing? It gives you an opportunity to showcase your programs and of course, how you're using the, the money that's passed on to you. But as well to introduce yourselves again and again to the community and talk about the good things that you're doing. And I, I think that it has been said throughout that, you know, the need is much greater than the resources. So there are a lot more people out there that are in challenging situations than we can serve and that you can serve, that all can serve. But we do what we can with what we have and we are trying to impact. I think you, you hear the, the diverse programming from youth and in schools to families to long-term tales on things. And it, it, it all makes a difference and I really appreciate the work that you do and appreciate you being here today. We'll try and continue to do it right. And I, I like the, the mention of these alcohol tax. I think the commissions across the state have a lot of discretion about how to use those. And we've had a tradition of trying to get them out in our community, to our nonprofits, to, to, to benefit those people that might be living with those disorders. So thank you very much for being here today. Appreciate it. Commissioners, anything else you want to add?
If I can just reiterate how important I think it is to have these long-term approaches that, that we talked about today, that these folks are doing. And I think when, when we try to help people to a better life, if, if we can stay with them and, and, and keep encouraging them, as, as is obvious in all of these programs, that I think makes the difference. And thank you for what you're doing. Please continue.
Thank you. So this was updates. There's no action on this item, but it is on our agenda. So we will take public comment on anything related to this, any, any public comment, any public comment. Okay. We'll move on to the next item, which is damage claim on impounded vehicle. Captain Robinson.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, good morning. I'm Captain Brian Robinson with the Sheriff's Office. I oversee the Criminal Investigations Division and the Patrol Division. Today, I have a recommendation from the Sheriff's Office to deny a claim for damages that was in our custody for the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. I know you were provided with a, a write-up of kind of what happened. I'll just go over a brief timeline to catch everybody up. And then also have some information that I just discovered or we just learned about twenty minutes prior to this meeting that I think is very important for you to hear before you make a decision on the claim. So in two thousand sixteen, April two thousand sixteen, we started a burglary investigation. As part of that investigation, we impounded a vehicle registered to William Cox. While that vehicle was in our impound lot, an unknown, I will say an unknown person illegally trespassed onto a property, cut the locks to the impound lot and stole that vehicle along with other items. It wasn't until three years later that that vehicle was located and returned to our impound lot. And then on October, in October twenty twenty-three, the registered owner, William Cox, contacted our office requesting reimbursement for damages and for items that were stolen off of that vehicle while it was in our care. He listed a ladder rack, toolboxes, side toolbox, grill guard, ignition and door lock sets were damaged and a radio. There was some conversation between our detective sergeant and Mr. Cox, and we conferred with the county attorney's office. We, we checked multiple reports and then today, one of our deputies, Sergeant Robert Kenyon, was reviewing, reviewing the case file and found a report where three of those items were actually released to Mr. Cox's father back in, I believe it was in twenty twenty-two. So three of the items were returned to his relative. The other three items are unaccounted for. Yes, the vehicle was in our custody. However, someone did trespass on the property. Someone did cut the security locks that we had on the lot and somebody stole the vehicle from our impound lot. At this time, we have a suspect, but nobody has been charged in that case. So we highly recommend that the claim be denied as it sits right now. If you remove the items that were already returned to Mr. Cox's father, the remaining amount would be one thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. And our, our recommendation is we deny the claim in its entirety.
Thank you, sir. Questions, commissioners, about this process? Yes, please.
Could you, we've got the list of the items in front of us. What are the items that were turned over to the father of the owner?
The father of the owner, yes. He was the father of the owner. So there was a toolbox for nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and then another side toolbox for six hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then a grill guard, which he valued at four hundred and two dollars and ninety-nine cents. All three of those were released to his father. All three of those are documented in our reports and we have copies of the father's signature taking custody of those items.
Thank you. I might turn to our county attorney, deputy county attorneys and ask just about process, why this, for the commission, why we take these steps and this rec, a little bit about the recommendation, if you would.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so under twenty-seven-two-two oh nine, the process spells out that if a claim is denied by the Board of County Commissioners, it starts a, I guess it starts the clock, so to speak, in which an individual could then bring a lawsuit against the county. So it brings that timeframe down to six months. So part of this process is to, essentially it's expedite claims against local governments. And so should the commission deny the claim today, we would send a letter to the individual informing them that you guys as the commissioners have denied the claim, that the six-month window has started and which if he wants to further pursue this claim, he has six months to do so. So we are at that process today.
Okay. And, and otherwise it, it lingers as long as three years potentially.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, depending on the nature of the claims and anything like that, it can go from three years, five years, eight years, that sort of a thing. But this kind of settles it and starts the six-month clock.
Give some sideboards to it so that we can, we know that the process will be pursued or not within that time period. Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes, please.
So recognizing that attorney's fees can absolutely go through the roof with any claim. And even a claim for a little over a thousand dollars can lead to costs to the public coffers that are completely out, I mean, I've seen this stuff blow up before and you can have a thousand-dollar claim and all of a sudden you've got a fifteen-thousand-dollar lawyer bill. On the other hand, we have to look at doing the right thing, not the easy thing. And so as we think about this, I mean, there's a lot of things we need to, to consider. Did the claimant have, did he give his dad permission to collect this stuff? Was it authorized by the owner of the the toolboxes and the grill guard?
I'm going to ask Sergeant Kenyon to come up. He has the reports that released those items.
And if I may interrupt really quickly.
Please.
Apologize. So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, you certainly bring up a good point about, when looking at claims, you value it from a various, you know, from the whole three hundred and sixty degrees aspect. This juncture today, really what it does is statute of limitations process. So it starts that clock of six months needing to, to file a claim against the county. So certainly at that point, too, there's always the opportunity to continue to evaluate a claim and how to move that forward. So I guess today doesn't necessarily foreclose any of those considerations at all. It's, thank you, more of a, again, a statutory formality for a statute of limitations process.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
I'm really glad you jumped in because I was going to try to say that, but I couldn't have said it in a way that was succinct and complete like that. Please, would you introduce yourself for the record, please?
I'm Robert Kenyon, Sergeant with Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office. So in this case, we had roughly seventy items that were unclaimed at the end of the investigation that got released to William Cox Senior, which is the William Cox Junior's father. There would have been a, typically a release waiver signed by the individual. He was incarcerated and so I don't have that here with me right now. But it would have been, would have had to sign a release waiver to release the property to whoever was going to pick it up. So our process would be, they have to sign the waiver, somebody shows up to get it. Otherwise, it starts the clock for us to be able to dispose of that because we can't hold all the items for long periods of time.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I was just going to offer Commissioner Payne, if you wanted to see the release item, the release paperwork, we could get you a copy of that if you need it.
I'll take your word for it.
Okay, thank you.
Been pretty straight with us before.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. All right, without further questions, how about a public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay, ring in, commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to deny this claim for, by Mr. Cox.
Second.
Move in second to deny the damage claim on the impounded vehicle as presented by Captain Robinson. Further discussion, commissioners? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Thank you for bringing it. We'll look forward to hopefully hearing and to the case sometime within the next six months. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a grant task order twenty-four dash zero seven dash one dash zero one dash zero nine nine dash zero between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Drenda Niemann, the Health Officer with Lewis and Clark Public Health. The Healthy Together Steering Committee, which was formed back in October of twenty seventeen, and includes Lewis and Clark Public Health, PureView Health Center, St. Peter's Health, United Way of the Lewis and Clark Area, Rocky and Rocky Mountain Development Council. This has been an ongoing partnership that's concerned with improving population health in our county. The Healthy Together Steering Committee, along with the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, are overseeing a first-of-its-kind community health survey in a multi-county area that spans Lewis and Clark, Jefferson, Powell, Broadwater, and Mar counties. Scheduled throughout this week, the community survey will take place in neighborhoods around the five-county area. This survey is meant to provide a snapshot of our communities on several health conditions, health behaviors, social determinants of health, including cancer, heart disease, substance use, behavioral health issues, housing, childcare, food security, and more. Among its many benefits, the survey is an opportunity for local, state, and federal agencies, both government and nonprofit, to connect with residents and hear firsthand their thoughts about the overall, their overall health and the health of our community. The survey results will be included in our two thousand twenty-four Community Health Report, which is published by the Healthy Together Steering Committee every three years. The report will then form the basis for our Community Health Improvement Plan, which will, which will be developed and really released in two thousand twenty-five and help determine public health priorities to improve health outcomes for residents in the county. Before you for consideration is a grant task order for, from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services to fund the community survey and to produce the new community health assessment in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. The term of the grant is from June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the explanation. Questions, commissioners?
Question, if I might.
Please.
Could you kind of explain the logistics here? Obviously, the process is going in, in place and we're just now asking for the, the grant funding. There must be a little bit more to it than what, what appears.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rolfe, yes, we've been working for months to get this organized and the logistics put in place. And we have relied heavily on the Center for Disease Control and Prevention to help with the survey methodology. And so we have fifty volunteers that are going to go out into the community this week. And that's just in Lewis and Clark County. There are volunteers also working in Powell, Mar, Jefferson, and Broadwater to do the similar, the same process in those counties. We're going to go door-to-door and ask residents of this community to respond to a survey. This survey should take about fifteen minutes and really gives an opportunity for individuals in this, in our county to let us know what their greatest concerns are around health in, in our county.
I guess if I might follow up, it, it just seems a little bit strange to have, have the process going before we ask for the money. And that's the part I wasn't.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rolfe, like similar to many other grants that come from the state, the, the grant process that the state goes through to get, to get the documents to the county just takes time. And so we, we waited for the state to process the task order for your consideration. And so it is now before you for approval.
Thank you.
But I wish that that was different. I wish that the, the state's process function differently so that we are able to get things, you know, handled proactively. Um, more often than not, we are, we're here doing things retroactively. So.
Thank you. Please.
Drenda, um, I'm, you mentioned that this survey is also taking place in all of our neighboring counties. Um, is this grant is eighteen thousand dollars, um, only being, it only goes through Lewis and Clark County, or do the other counties each have their own grants to do this?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, uh, this grant is supporting the whole effort, the whole five county effort. Most of the, um, most of the funding went to promotion of, you know, this is happening in our community. Residents, please answer your doors. And so all of the promotional materials were utilized throughout the entire five county area, not just Lewis and Clark. So we capitalized on the funds that we had in order to support the whole effort.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate the explanation. Okay, uh, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay, Commissioners, is there a motion to approve grant? The grant task order is presented.
Chairman, um, I move that we approve grant task order twenty-four dash zero seven dash one dash zero one dash zero zero, oop, back up, dash zero nine nine dash zero between Lewis and Clark Public Health and the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, as explained to us by Drenda Niemann.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the grant task order as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. We are on to the next item on the agenda, which is amendment to restrictions for High Country Snack Foods Workforce House Housing Development Project. Housing project, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Ann McCauley, Director of the Grants and Purchasing Department. Before you today, it is an amendment to a restriction for the High Country Snack Foods Snack Foods Workforce Housing Project in Lincoln, Montana. To start, I'll provide a little background on this project and then talk specifically about what this amendment is. In the fall of twenty twenty-one, representatives from the Montana Business Assistance Connection, or MBACK, which is our regional economic development organization, came to the county with the problem of housing in Lincoln. There was a, there's always kind of been a shortage of housing in Lincoln. Affordability has been an issue and these issues were further exasperated by the COVID nineteen pandemic and many people seeking out, um, the rural charm that Lincoln provides. Um, High Country Snack Foods, whose parent company is called Copper Pines LLC, and has been working with MBACK for a number of years, um, specifically through the company's ownership change in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and doing, uh, needed improvements to the factory up there, um, was specifically having this issue. The High Country Snack Foods is the largest private employer in Lincoln, and they were hearing from employees, um, that they were trying to recruit as well as retain, that housing was certainly an issue with them being able to stay in Lincoln and continue working for High Country. To help address this issue, High Country Snack Foods, or specifically Copper Pines LLC, their parent company, in partnership with MBACK, requested a hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars, um, the county's direct allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to purchase three refurbished manufactured houses to be placed on a ten acre tract that's directly adjacent to the factory and gift shop. I know all of you have been there, but it's just a little bit north of where that is on Highway two hundred, um, to serve as workforce housing. A condition of this request was to, to ensure this remains as workforce housing, a condition of the request, um, that was approved by the commission in fall of twenty-one, was to put a restrictive declaration on the property for a duration of five years. This restriction called for the housing to be, um, using HUD's definition of affordability, no more than thirty percent of their gross income could go towards housing costs um, for a period of five years. We did a subrecipient agreement with MBACK in winter of twenty twenty-two. In that spring, two of the three refurbished homes were purchased and, um, brought onto the property. I should note that part of Copper Pines matched to this request was to actually do the development, um, pour the concrete, get the roadwork done, and bring in the services, which amounted to over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, the original restriction after those two units were purchased was recorded with the County Clerk and Recorder's Office in June of twenty-two. This was when the clock started on that five year term. At this time, it was the understanding of the county and MBACK that the units would be leased and occupied within a few months of that time. For various reasons, including a delay in being able to procure and purchase the third housing unit, um, getting the electrical hookups done. Though the third unit wasn't placed until this past fall, fall of twenty-three, and then it took a little bit longer to get all the, um, hookups done through the winter months. Happy to report that the three housing units are fully ready and leased as of May one of twenty twenty-four. So that brings me to what this amendment is before you. Um, recognizing that there's been a two-year lapse since it was first recorded in June of twenty-two, that those units haven't been occupied. Copper Pines owner Travis Byerly submitted a letter to the county requesting that this restriction be amended to reset the five-year term to begin May one, twenty twenty-four. And that's what this proposed amendment before you is today, is to strike the language in the fifth paragraph for the term that reads the date this declaration is recorded, to be replaced with May one, twenty twenty-four. Upon, upon approval of this amendment, Mr. Byerly will sign and re-record this restriction with the Clerk and Recorder's Office. And at that time, we will make the final reimbursement payment on this project and it will close out. I'm also happy to take any questions, but we do have Eric Seidensticker from MBACK here. He's been the project manager on this project from the get-go, and he can provide a lot more of the details.
Great. Thank you. And I, I think, uh, this was the intent really from the beginning that after the units were ready to go, that's when we would start the clock. And I know it officially wasn't written that way, so it's nice to, uh, correct this. And this amendment is something I really appreciate.
Yes, Mr. Chair, a lot of lessons learned through all of this process, but we're in a good place with it now.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
No.
Mr. Seidensticker, I, I don't know if you have a comment or not, if you'd like to address the commission. Welcome.
Green light is on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Eric Seidensticker, S E I D E N S T I C K E R. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I think, and summarize where we've been this entire time. Um, I am happy to answer any questions. I did just want to add two pieces. Um, moving forward, we will do kind of an annual check-in on the units to make sure that they are staying occupied. Uh, basically on the date of that, that May first, April timeline, we'll continue to do a check-in for the point of the five-year period, just to make sure that they are being utilized, they're being made available to employees or other members of the community. Um, I did want to just add two really quick. Um, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna read DAC names, but I did just want to give a couple pieces of information related to the positions that are, um, essentially the people, excuse me, that are living in there that are employees. Um, one of them is the Director of the Process Optimization, basically all of the, um, the equipment layout, the flow, the manufacturing. Um, the second position is actually the new General Manager, Production Manager. So having a new GM at a plant in Lincoln, Montana is a really big deal. Um, and then the second is a Food Science Quality Control, so all the USDA inspection. Um, this individual does all of the, the interaction, the testing on the products too. Um, the last thing I'd like to point out, Commissioners, we did do, um, some voluntary income survey to just understand exactly how much these individuals were making to maintain that affordability for the units. And, um, I think it's really cool to mention that the lowest salary for one of those workers is seventy thousand and the highest is about a hundred thousand dollars. So that's a really healthy salary in Helena. That in Lincoln, Montana is, I would say, pretty good, just given what you know, the remoteness, the amount of employers. So I'm really happy to just add that those are new people working really, uh, high paying jobs in Lincoln, Montana. So just wanted to add those two pieces.
Great. Thank you very much for that information. Appreciate it. Appreciate the work you've done. Helping us work with the owner as well to make sure all these things are tight, so.
Lessons learned. I think Ann summarized it very well.
We're there now, I think. So that's good. Any questions, Commissioners?
I'm conjuring up a question here. Um, one of the major concerns has been an increase in property taxes to all of our uh, taxpaying citizens. And this is the, the the increase in the value of these homes, is that then assessed to is it Copper, Copper Pines LLC, and it's added on to their tax, um, rate? Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, I believe when reassessment happens again, or I'm just not quite sure with the, with the way the units have come on again, we had two units come up at one point in time and then that third unit came up. So basically, before the housing units, I believe Copper Pines was just paying taxes solely on the land. And so whenever that reassessment period happens or has happened, I think that those units will be placed on the tax roll as, as property underneath Copper Pines. So it should show up with their taxes, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would move to, um, approve the amendment to the restrictions on High Country Snack Foods Workforce Housing Project, as explained by Ms. Ms. McCauley and Mr. Seidensticker.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the amendment to the restrictions as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Thank you.
Just, uh, just a thought, you know, this is, this is, uh, one of the places, ways we use some of that, uh, federal funding money that, that came in and tried to use it to, uh, for specific projects where there wouldn't be ongoing costs. And, and I think this, uh, was a good project to help the people of, of the whole community of Lincoln.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
Um, just a comment that, um, our concerns about taxes and taxable value bef- before this project, this was empty land and taxed that way. Now it has three valuable structures that will increase the tax base and while providing a true service to not only the community of Lincoln, but to our county. And, and I think this is a good, um, a good situation. We're trying to balance out the value to our taxpayers. Um, and they, as they fix things up, they have to pay the increase in the value of taxes. Um, and I, I mean, that's, we can support that valuation. It isn't just a magic number that the Department of Revenue comes up with to increase our property taxes. This is actual increase in value. And I think this is what our taxpaying public expects. They want something that is predictable. They know property is going to be more valuable with the land, with the buildings on it than it was as empty land. And they can factor that in. It's just, and this, the property tax thing has been a huge, um, concern to all of us. Every one of the three of us gets, um, remarks about why are my property taxes so high? Why am I going to have to move out of my home because I can't afford to live here because of the taxes? Anyway, so I, I think this is, this is the way it's supposed to work. So, uh, good job, MBACK, and, uh, there she, oh, there she is. Yes, Ms. McCauley.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in second on the floor to approve the amendment to the restrictions. Commissioners, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is American Rescue Plan Act update and request for project scope change. Good morning.
Good morning, uh, Commissioners, um, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, for the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis Clark County Public Works Director. Um, I am here today to provide an update on the Murray Building Ventilation, uh, American Rescue Plan Act, our ARPA project, and requested approval for a project scope change. Um, also present is Ann McCauley, the Grants and Purchasing Director, if there's any specific requests to the ARPA funding portion of this project. Um, the Michael A. Murray Building currently houses Lewis and Clark County Public Health Offices and also the Purview Health Center. As you may recall, the Board of County Commissioners approved the ARPA project in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to upgrade the mechanical heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and to remove and replace all reflock fittings and replace it with the new, new connections throughout this building. There were concerns, um, the basis for the request was there were concerns from the current system. It required a lot of maintenance and ongoing operational issues um, to allow proper air ventilation, airflow, and exchange, exchange of air, as well as just challenges with, um, complaints from the customers and employees about the individual settings, um, for each of the different work areas and zones. So you could have one HVAC zone, another one adjacent to that, and the temperature controls were really hard to, hard to manage. In addition, since we were going to potentially replace the HVAC system throughout the building, it was going to require um, a lot of construction and tearing out of ceiling tiles and things like that. So another component was to replace the reflock fittings, which is the, um, basically the sprinkler system associated with the, with the facility, um, because of some potential leak issues. Um, at the same time, we were tearing out those walls and structures. Um, so it's just kind of a combination of a project for that five hundred and sixty thousand. Because of the complexity of this project and the overall impact to the operations of the Michael A. Murray Building, we wanted to kind of, uh, walk through a, a project planning process with this particular implementation. So in June of twenty twenty-three, we solicited and, and contracted with an owner's representative, um, Hal Tang, CCM Incorporated. They were also the entity that helped with the jail renovation project to just logistically help us evaluate with the pre-construction planning and also assist with, uh, defining each scope of the phase as we were going to implement this project, um, holistically. So in, they had recommended initially that we contract with a mechanical systems review, um, to recommend whether or not we would do an HVAC system upgrade or whether we would do a complete full replacement of the HVAC system. That was completed in February of twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four, um, by ACE Engineering, which is Association Construction and Engineering Incorporated for mechanical system evaluation. And they recommended that we do a complete replacement of the HVAC system for the building. And because the building, um, has had multiple renovations in the past, um, and has different components of how that system's been integrated, um, the total estimated cost of that HVAC replacement for that Michael A. Murray Building is between three point two million dollars and three point, to three point five million dollars. So a very large, um, expense based upon that, um, replacement of that system. So in Public Works, we decided to pause, uh, think about the project holistically, look at how the current system has been operating. Um, are there components of the system that we do need to make some changes to? Um, because we certainly cannot afford, um, at this time, the three point two to three point five million dollar implementation of this project. So we, we recommend that we do not move forward with the complete replacement of the Michael A. Murray Building HVAC system. The cost ranges right now is prohibited and likely exceeds the value of the property. But we would like to reallocate and have you consider reallocation of the ARPA funding to other improvements in the Michael A. Building that would add value to the building and then also is needed as far as long-term, um, operation needs of that facility. Um, the first is to replace the roof to, uh, the existing membrane roof, uh, is past its useful life. It needs to be replaced. Um, we would add additional, um, insulation as part of the roof project that would improve the temperature control in the building, so still meeting some of our goals that we originally had with the original ARPA request. But it's something also is needed in the long range planning of the project. The other component would be a generator. The existing generator that's in the Michael A. Murray Building was installed in two thousand seventeen with the Disaster Emergency Services Grant. It supports the public health services in an emergency event. So the public health, uh, components of the building are supported by the generator, but the building as a whole is not backed up by generator power. So we would add a new generator to the building, or a larger generator that would also include coverage for the HVAC system that we currently have, building control systems, the security and fire alarm systems, and that would also be supportive if there was a, a power outage. Um, right now we would have nothing in place if there was that. The other component that would also meet one of our original goals of the ARPA project is to, uh, replace, um, the makeup air unit or the MAU with a larger air handler, um, that would help with the outside air condition and not recirculate the indoor air and that. And not recirculate the indoor air and that would help meet the state mechanical codes and help with it clear uh clean air exchange. For that building based upon the occupants that are in that building. So those three um components would be what we would like to do to repurpose the ARPA dollars. And the estimated cost breakdown is also provided in your memo, but um just to recap a little bit. The ARPA approved funding was five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. To date, we have only spent seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars of that five hundred and sixty thousand, and that was to do the. Um, mechanical system review with that engineering firm. And then the additional cost um would be allocated to a roof replacement, which we will know shortly what that bid amount is going to be. But we are estimating around two hundred and forty, but we'll see what the bid comes out at. An MAU unit and the and the generator and then have a seven percent contingency amount um that we allocated for this project just to make sure we're in line with the dollar amount. So. With that, uh, Chairman, um, staff recommends um the scope of the project for the ARPA allocation and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, commissioners at this time? Um, I'll I'll ask uh the MAU or the the um air handling unit. Um, that was one of the biggest concerns. I mean, it's kind of what got us started, the temperature fluctuations plus the airflow and all of that. So this this will be a step in the right direction. We can afford the entire project, but this will make a difference in terms of the airflow and the air exchange in the building.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. So we, we wanted to really evaluate what our original goals were for the project. And since we can't afford the full uh three point two to three point five million. Yeah, it's, we want to make sure that we have um some air exchange with the MAU unit. That will help us with the building code requirements. And as you're aware, like health facilities have um higher occupational safety health standard requirements than um just general office uh. Office areas. So we're going to take a step closer in that direction um with with this particular project, the MAU replacement. In addition, with the with the adding the insulation to the roof, we're hoping that's also going to control some of the heat. Um, issues that we have or temperature controls and help it balance out a little bit further. Plus, we'll have some cost savings hopefully hopefully with some of our electrical usage of that building with more insulation.
Right, and it's a good point. For those that don't know, the Michael A. Murray Building houses the Peer View Clinic as well as the Public Health Department. And so there's a lot of. Clients, patients coming in and out, uh, whether they're on the health side for uh nurse visits or immunizations. Or on the peer view side for actual clinic uh visits. So it is a kind of a hu- higher standard. It's run more like uh the building's more like a doctor's office versus a regular office building. Um, you mentioned the roof as well, and this isn't coming out of thin air, this change of scope. We've been, we've known the roof is going to be, need to be replaced in the very near future. And we've been actually doing some saving for that on the side as well. So this is a project that um we knew we were going to have to do, and this might be an opportunity to get that done, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's a, that's a great point. So um, the roof and the generator have been on our capital improvement plan for the Michael A. Murray Building for quite several years. Um, we were anticipating needing to replace the roof. Actually, um, building supervisor Mac McCarley's here as well. He would have said we probably needed to do it, wanted to do it this summer, which we're hoping we can still get it done later this summer. So it's 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 due. Any cost savings we have with the ARPA monies for the CIP will just help that overall reserve. And we won't need to initially increase any cost moving forward and then reallocate those to the other projects that are currently unfunded at this at this point in time. So it will save our capital improvement plan, um, be money well used. And if for some reason we have to go a little bit more than the five hundred and sixty thousand. There'll be some money in that capital improvement plan if needed to get these three components of the project completed.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation. Any other questions, commissioners? I think we've covered it pretty well. Thank you very much. Uh, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion, please, commissioners? This is on item number seven.
Yeah, I move that we uh approve the American Rescue Plan Act update. And request for project scope change as presented by uh Jenny Chambers.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the scope change as presented. Uh, further discussion, commissioners? Thank you. Appreciate, you know, when when this came forward, our initial thoughts were to. Update that system and um the review came in as a. Full replacement that was way out of, out of whack in terms of our affordability that we tried to. Find the next best answer to addressing some of the issues of that building. So thank you for for doing that. Appreciate it. I'm in support. Commissioners, anything further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. Commissioners, um, how about it is uh ten fifteen? How about a five-minute uh break for the restroom and maybe fill up your coffee cup? All right, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Hey, how are you? Check.
Oh, yes, again, make sure there's no graffiti or, yeah.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna get restarted here, folks, so give you a few seconds to get back to your seats. And all that. Mr. Chairman, we're gonna start again, so. Okay. Yes, okay, sorry. How about now? All right, I have no, my light's the same no matter on or off, so I have to make sure I figure it out. Thank you. Uh, we will, we will reconvene here and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution twenty-two-four dash four-seven. To levy assess the Lanning Rural Improvement District number nineteen ninety-one dash four. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jessica Makas, Special Districts Program Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Uh, today we will be continuing the public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption. Of Resolution twenty-two-four dash forty-seven to levy and assess an annual special assessment of one hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Upon each benefiting property within the Lanning Road Improvement District. With a total of twenty-four benefiting properties. Uh, four thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty cents will be assessed annually to fund maintenance of the district. Uh, this district is located to the west of Valley Drive. Uh, just to the north of the northern boundary of the city of East Helena, and it's highlighted in pink um on our map this morning. Uh, again, the Lanning District was created through a citizen-initiated petition in nineteen ninety-two to improve and maintain Lanning Road. Maintenance provided by the district includes snow plowing and sanding as needed. Crack sealing, pothole patching, sweeping, drainage maintenance and chip sealing. Uh, the maintenance assessment has been seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents per property per year since two thousand and three. However, we have seen a significant increase in the cost of road maintenance, specifically the cost of chip sealing. These increases have resulted in a projected budget shortfall of approximately eight thousand dollars for the next chip seal cycle, which is scheduled for fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, this item, as we know, was tabled from June thirteenth. Um, and during that public hearing, an owner, a property owner brought up the issue of a detour. Used uh last summer during a county construction project on Valley Drive. Um, I have drawn the detour map on our, our route on our map today, so I'll just um. Zoom out here and we can take a look at that route. Okay, I've highlighted that route in orange. Hopefully you all can see that. But that detour um route came west from Valley Drive west onto Lanning Road. And then went south onto Westview Drive. Uh, made the turn onto Tree Rise Road just for a bit and then went down Sarah Avenue through the Vigilante subdivision. And then east on Plant Road and back out onto Valley Drive. Uh, the the public hearing was tabled to allow public's work staff time to look into potential impacts of this detour. Uh, to the road network. Uh, and determine if a financial contribution to the district was warranted due to damage caused um to the roads by the detour. Uh, I do want to, want to mention that additionally, a statement was made during that public hearing that these roads were not public roads. Uh. These, um, I've I've included in your packet today, the the dedication. Uh, petition uh where these, this right-of-way was um dedicated to the public forever uh in nineteen seventy-three. So this includes all of the roads in the Grand View um addition subdivision, which includes the Lanning RID and then the Grand View RID to the south. Um, I do want to also say that during the time this detour was open, it was a total of eight and a half weeks last summer. Uh, the county inspected the detour route prior to construction, during construction. And then also uh at the end of the construction project. At no time uh was any damage to the roadways observed by myself. Uh, Caleb Marcus, our RID Construction Coordinator, or Dan Carlin, our county engineer. The reason for the construction on Valley Drive uh was the need for a turn lane, a center turn lane on Valley Drive. Uh, this project was necessary due to the increased average daily traffic on Valley Drive. Um, plus the additional traffic generated from the construction of new schools in East Helena. This was the county's portion of the project and additional work will be required in the future. Uh, to continue that turn lane down Valley Drive um as as that Valley Drive enters into the city of East Helena, all the way down to Highway twelve. Uh, this uh, the, this project required that the road be widened to accommodate that additional turn lane. Uh, once widened, the road was repaved. The total project cost, including engineering, was just over one point five million dollars. This project is a benefit to all who use Valley Drive, which includes the residents in the Lanning and Grand View Road Improvement Districts. During the construction planning, use of the detour was considered along with the alternative option of twenty-four-seven traffic control along Valley Drive. Uh, a detour, though, is advantageous in that it's safer to keep the traveling public away from a construction site. Uh, and those large construction vehicles. Further, um, in this case, because uh, you know, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, um. Tra- you know, pilot cars signaling, all of that would have been required on a one-lane uh project. Uh, this detour easily saved taxpayers um at least eighty thousand dollars. Just by running a detour versus having constant traffic control for the project. Uh, this project was also planned to begin once school was out for the summer. Uh, to mitigate as much inconvenience to the traveling public as possible. Uh, once the detour was selected, requirements for maintenance were set forth in the construction contract. The detour route was inspected prior to use and the contractor in charge of the project. Put five side dump loads of road mix, so seventy cubic yards onto Westview Road. Um, or excuse me, Westview Drive. And then graded, watered and compacted the road prior to its use as a detour. This work was completed on June sixth, prior to the notice to proceed with the project on June eighth. The county, the engineering firm in charge of the project and the contractor met weekly during the project. Uh, to coordinate progress and address any issues that came up with the detour route. Um, and and obviously the construction project and and as well. Uh, minutes were recorded for each of these meetings. Complaints were sent to the contractor and the contractor addressed these issues directly. On June twelfth, the contractor graded and watered the detour uh route. This occurred again on June twenty-seventh and on Ju- July twelfth. Additionally, the project superintendent often graded the road at the end of the work shift and added um additional spot loads of gravel. Uh, throughout the corridor as needed. The detour was watered regularly to prevent dust. And on July twenty-seventh, the work to widen uh the Valley Drive was complete. And the contractor mobilized out of the project area and closed the detour until it was time to pave. On August fourteenth, the contractor regraded the detour route and mobilized back on site. Paving began and was completed on August twenty-fourth. The contractor swept the hard-surfaced roads on the detour route and watered, graded and compacted Westview Drive to close out the project. Uh, in summary, the contractor improved Westview Drive considerably prior to construct, construction. Uh, maintained the detour throughout the project timeframe and once again, uh, when that project was completed. Again, that detour was open for a total of eight point, eight and a half weeks. In addition, the approaches from Valley Drive onto both Lanning Road and also Grand View Road. Uh, were paved as um part of the project, had subgrade added and then were paved on top. Uh, as part of this project, Grand View Road had an additional area of seven hundred and forty-four square feet beyond the approach. Uh, repaved to cover a utility, utility digout um and provide the best final surface on the transition from Valley Drive. Uh, through Grand View Road. Uh, the total amount of the approach work and the additional amount on Grand View uh totaled about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, to put that kind of into context. Um, that's about roughly three times the total annual assessment rate of Lanning and Grand View combined at its current rate. Not at the proposed increases we're discussing today, but but the current um, the current assessment rate. Um, beyond the detour issue, uh. A property owner also brought up the issue of a thirty-foot right-of-way at the very end of Tree Rise. As it turns into Westview Drive. I'll just um zoom into this area specifically on the map for us.
Thank you.
So we're talking about a thirty-foot right-of-way right in this, this corner here. Uh, the property owner stated that this route was previously blocked by a barricade, which was removed by the county in order to use the detour route. Um, I want to be very clear that the county did not move any barricade. There was not a barricade put in place by the county or then removed by the county. Uh, these are not county roads. Um, and and. A barricade was neither placed or removed by the county or the contractor as a result of this detour. Uh, because the county, and I spoke to Jesse Whitford, if he knew anything about a barricade in years past, um, he's our uh. Um, does a lot of work for the RIDs and also the road department and has been at the county for um a number of years. He did not know of any barricade in this location. I also reached out to the city of East Helena to determine if they knew anything about a barricade, since this is so close to that um city of East Helena boundary. And now that with the Vigilante sub subdivision being annexed and it it now borders uh the city of East Helena. The city of um East Helena Public Works Director said that the only barricade he was aware of. Uh, was during the paving of a portion of Tree Rise Road here. Um, as part of the Vigilante subdivision. I'll turn on the aerial imagery and we can see this a little bit better. One moment. Okay, that helps us a little bit there. Um, during that paving project for that extension of Tree Rise Road associated with that subdivision, there was a barricade put on the. Um, Westview Road between Tree Rise and Westview to block anybody from going into that construction project uh while that road was being paved. Uh, my understanding from uh the Public Works Director is that once that project was completed, that barricade was removed by the contractor that paved that portion of Tree Rise. Um, I've also looked at the condition of both Lanning Road and Grand View Road. I think both are in fairly good condition. And the asphalt approach from Valley Drive uh onto each of those roads is is very smooth. Uh, there is some material on the roads on both Lanning and on Grand View. Um, however, I believe that the vast majority of that material appears to be from gravel transitions um with Westview Drive. As well as the number of dirt and gravel driveways um on each of those roads that bring up material. We can absolutely have those swept. Um, generally with RID funds, we don't recommend sweeping every year unless we're dealing with a lot of sand. That's being, that's been put down due to, due to a lot of, a big, big snow year. So um where we've had a, a large amount of snowfall and a large amount of sanding put down on roadways as a result. Um. This is in an effort to to save funds. We can absolutely have. We can absolutely have Lanning Road and Grandview Road swept. However, because the source of the material on the road is a constant source from Westview Drive and also from these driveways, I, I think we'll, we'll see that material come back rather quickly. However, if it's the, if, if folks would like that service performed more frequently, that's certainly something that we could work into our assessment calculation and up a little bit of budget, you know, for that service moving forward, if that's desired. And I am happy to take any questions about the detour, about the current condition of Lanning or of Grandview, anything at all. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation, for answering the questions that came up in our last meeting. I really appreciate that. And this larger scope of question answering in terms of the detour and Westview, those are all very nice, good information, but I just want to remind us that it is beyond the decisions being made today. The decision for this is about Lanning, right? Lanning Road only, and the RID that's on Lanning Road and the proposed increase for maintenance and care of Lanning Road alone has nothing to do with Westview and/or the detour. However, we've, we, it was brought up, so we had questions about that, and ultimately, from, from your explanation, Westview is better now and has more material on it than before the construction project. This material was brought in, it was graded a couple of times, so that was added. And the approaches to both Lanning and Grandview were off of, off of Valley Drive were significantly improved, the, those aprons, they're now pavement, they're wider, they're in better shape than they were prior. And, and the folks that live in those RIDs benefited from those new aprons in that construction project without having to, no money was taken from the RID for those new aprons, correct?
Mr. Chair, that is all correct. That entire summary is correct.
Okay, so I want us to focus on the Lanning Road Rural Improvement District. However, because all of this was brought in, and we aren't trying to answer questions from last time, commissioners, do you have any questions for?
I, I do, I do have a question. On the resolution itself, Resolution 2024-47, it's been, my understanding, that we generally require a 20% of the, of the, of the landowners to ask for, for, when a improvement district is set up, but this says that at least 60% were, and that, that's what actually happened on that particular road when it was done?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ralph, this is an excellent question. You'll notice it, it does not say a rural improvement district, this is the Lanning Road Improvement District created in 1992, I think. At that time, we had a different set of statutes for road improvement districts. In 2009, those statutes were repealed. However, we have a grandfather clause that we are to administer those districts as they were in statute in 2007. And with a road improvement district, in order to create one of those, there was a statutory requirement that in order to create a road improvement district, you had to get a petition, an initial petition of 60% of the benefiting properties. Today, what we have are rural improvement districts, which follow a different chapter of statute. There is no petition requirement to create a rural improvement district. However, Lewis and Clark County has the additional policy that we require a petition of at least 20% to consider a rural improvement district moving forward. So as, as you'll notice, in this resolution, it refers to the sections of statute that existed for administering road improvement districts at that time, which is a different set than we use to administer our rural improvement districts, which has the exact same acronym.
And, and if I might follow up?
Please.
It, it would appear that from the copies of the petitions that we have here, there was, it was near unanimous of the request for, for the, for the road to be, for the road improvement district to be, to be, to be formed.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ralph, I did not look back to that original petition, so I cannot speak to that this morning. Certainly something I could, could look at, it's, it's posted on our website, we keep copies of all of the, that information on our website.
There might be a bit of confusion, I think, maybe mixing this petition up with the RID. This petition was to make the roads public, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yes, so, so we're talking about two different petitions, absolutely. So the petition that I included in your packet was from 1973, and this petition dedicated those road right-of-ways for the entire Grandview Addition subdivision, which includes Lanning Road, Westview Drive, Grandview Road, a little bit of Tree Rise Road. It, it includes all of that, those roads in that public dedication from 1973. And then the Grandview subdivision was final plotted, I believe, in 1976 after that. The petition for the road improvement district after the fact to improve and then maintain Lanning Road, and then there's also the one for Grandview Road, those happened in the early 90s, and, and the, would have required also a petition process, but a different petition process, through a different statutory requirement.
Thanks for clarining that, clarifying that up. I, I just, it was too, kind of confusing.
Yes, this does get complicated with all of our chapters of statute.
And just watch, it's a road improvement district, and I'll call it a rural improvement district more than once, probably before we're done here, so excuse me for that, but it's a road improvement district. All right. Anything further on answering that? Any, any more questions right now on Lanning? Happen? Okay, great. Anything want to add over here? Okay, all right. And we'll take public comment on this item. Take public comment. This is on the resolution to levy and assess the Lanning Road Improvement District. So is there public comment? Please. If you'd state your name and address for the record for us again, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Dale Brackman, I live on Grandview Road, but I also, my property borders Lanning Road. We can address all these issues on the next issue, which is Grandview Road, if you want.
Yeah, I probably, probably want to, if that's the one that you'd like to talk, that's your road, so, or your, your district, so we can wait. Okay.
So I'll wait.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, any further questions, comments? And if there's no further public comment on Lanning, we will proceed. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-47 to levy and assess the Lanning Rural Improvement District number 1991-4, which was tabled at our meeting on June 13th, 2024, and this whole thing was explained to us by Jessica Makeus.
Second. Moved and seconded, approved the resolution as presented. Further discussion, commissioners?
Just, one, I want to, so what we're, this resolution only involves the section of road between this, the corner of Westview Drive and Lanning, and then east to Valley Drive. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, so, so no, it's Valley Drive, just, yes, just to that corner, so just Lanning Road only. Okay, thank you.
Yep, Lanning Road. All right. Anything further, commissioners? Jessica, just thank you for the explanation and for working through some of the questions that we had and the public had around this. I think last time, the commission did express our interest in finding out if the detour route did impact the, the road improvement district, and after the review from staff and the engineer, and the time spent on checking that, reviewing that, listening to your explanation, it was clear to me that, that impact was not significant. So we will move on. Commissioners, anything further? Home favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so Lanning Road will set aside, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution 24, 2024-48 to levy and assess the Grandview Rural Road Improvement District, number 1991-2.
Okay.
In my defense, it does say rural on the agenda, so that's good. I got myself there. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, again, Jessica Makeus, Special Districts Program Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Again, we will continue our public hearing with comments and objections regarding the final adoption of Resolution 2024-48 to levy and assess an annual special assessment of $144.15 upon each benefiting property within the Grandview Road Improvement District. With a total of 30 benefiting properties, $4,324.50 will be assessed annually to fund the maintenance of the district. Again, this district is located just to the west of Valley Drive, just north of the northern boundary of East Helena, and it's highlighted here in kind of light, light orange or tan. And I, I know that this, this item came up on, in June, on June 13th, when we talked about this district, but that area with the vigilante subdivision is, is no longer part of this, of this district, and will be excluded in, in an updated map, but our, our interactive mapping site just still pulls that, that original boundary.
Could you, with your mouse, show us Grandview Road and, and what it, what we're talking about here, and then the district, the part of it that's not included, not going to be included anymore?
Sure.
Do you need to turn on that?
Yeah, it's turned on. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so Grandview Road is, is here, excuse me, is, here's Valley Drive, Grandview Road goes, goes right here, and then it also includes this 12-foot-wide Grandview Road loop, and that's the, the district for Grandview. Here is Westview Drive. Originally, all of these parcels, before we had this, this vigilante subdivision subdivided, all of these went out Westview and Grandview because there was no extension of Tree Rise. Tree Rise Road ended right here, and so this whole area benefited from Grandview Road in the past. However, with the development of the vigilante subdivision and the extension, the 60-foot-wide right-of-way road extension of Tree Rise Road, this, this area no longer benefits from this district. And so as we look at this resolution to levy and assess, instead of, you know, 32 benefiting properties, we now have 30 in this, in this particular district.
Okay. Yes.
Clarification. On the map, it shows Tree Rise Road, and at the very end, it is still designated as Grandview Road, right there. And so...
Grandview RID, that says?
No, that says Road, right?
Go back to the...
No, this is the right one.
So Grandview Road runs right, right through here off Valley Drive.
I see that.
And then it extends and has this little loop at the very western end, and then this is Westview Drive, or Road, I guess, continuing north-south until its intersection with Tree Rise.
Okay, but when you backed out a ways...
The last screen.
There.
The, the last slide, maybe.
Okay.
It was...
There you go.
There you go, now zoom in.
On, on the corner of Tree Rise there, that's it.
Oh, your label.
But make it big again.
Oh, sorry.
It's gonna say, it's gonna say, all right. Zoom in.
Okay.
Just, just zoom in the whole thing, so we can see that better. See, it says RID, oh, there it went away.
Yeah, and, and so that, that label is Grandview RID, Road Improvement District, and it is labeling this tan polygon that we have outlining the district. And so as you zoom in and out, it's, it's gonna, you know, change that label's size and position to center up with that district.
I think what was confusing, it was just at the corner there of, of Tree Rise and West.
Okay.
And I, I was concerned that it appeared that this southern chunk was part of Grandview Road, and I don't believe it is, but the way the map was showing...
This, this parcel here, for sure?
Yeah, and I went out and I drove this route and looked at it, and I believe there is a big black railroad tie corner post, and I think it's on that corner. I don't know that it would show up from an aerial view.
It may, it may not, but there is a fence line you can kind of see on this corner from Tree Rise to Westview as what the Westview right-of-way goes from 60 feet to 30 feet right in this section as it makes that turn, perhaps.
Okay, yes, and it was, but that is... Okay. All right, we are working with, I'm confused by the views, you know, is it a Westview or a Grandview? Okay, sorry, I, okay, but I understand.
Back to Grandview, just that street is the only street that we're talking about.
Okay, so from...
Yeah.
Right there.
Right up here.
Then that is Tree Rise Road.
Nope.
No, I mean, the one I was looking at.
Yeah, right.
I think I've got it now.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
No problem.
Trying to make sure we're all clear, that's good.
It's nice to have this, this mapping tool, to be able to go in and out, it's, it's nice that our GIS department has this for us. So the Grandview Road Improvement District was created through a citizen-initiated petition in 1991 to improve and maintain Grandview Road through the loop at the end. Maintenance provided by the district includes snow plowing and sanding as needed, crack sealing, pothole patching, sweeping and drainage maintenance, and chip sealing. The maintenance assessment has been $68.30, and, excuse me, $68.36 per property per year since 2003. However, we have seen a significant increase in the cost of road maintenance, specifically that cost of chip sealing, and these increases have resulted in a projected budget shortfall of approximately $5,000 for the next chip seal cycle, which is scheduled for fiscal year 2027. An increase to this assessment will ensure annual maintenance in the Grandview Road Improvement District can be completed as detailed in the resolution that created the district. This is a total increase of $75.79 per property per year. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions at this point, commissioners? Again, I'll go through the same process. Thank you for the overall explanation. Again, we're focusing on Grandview Drive through the loop and back, that is what is covered by this road improvement district. So the discussion of Westview, Tree Rise, those are not in consideration in terms of this funding, this funding is specifically for Grandview, and that's what we're considering, an increase to the, to the assessment to maintain Grandview only. So that, in fact, yes, sir.
There was some question last, last time, I just wanted to clarify it, that that loop at the end of Grandview is included in the district, is that right? And maintenance of that loop is included in the district?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ralph, that's correct. So when this district was created in 1992, one, the loop was included, it's only a 12-foot width for the loop, and that's stated in the resolution that created the district, but that is included for the maintenance as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. And that was brought up by, I think, Mr. Jackson in the last meeting, and so that, I, I think he did have a couple of questions regarding that, and I'm sure that you'll be able to answer those for him. So to continue on, as in the last RID, this one was benefited by the road project from the standpoint of the apron was improved onto Valley Drive at no cost to the, to the RID residents. Correct?
Mr. Chair, that's correct, that apron was put in, and then on Grandview Road, there was an additional area just past that apron, it was also part of, just a portion of it, I think on the south side had to be dug up for a utility relocation, but they paved the whole chunk of that to, and, and it even... And and it even on the map says to, you know, create the best surface possible through that transition.
Sure.
That additional work that's done as well. At no cost to the R I D.
To the R I D, good. And then one of the concerns I had, the one one thing that resonated with me. As a response to the last meeting was the transition from Westview on to Grandview. And if if that traffic or detour traffic could have contributed to the deterioration of the hard surface there, the chip seal. And I drove it as well and listening to staff, it looks like that most of that deterioration that's there. Is related to folks stopping and going at the mailboxes. And that would not have been detour traffic at all. So that was, that could be attributed to. Most likely the people that that live there and use that mailbox stop. So as you said prior as well, it was. Checked during the detour process, it's checked after. And from Public Works Review and our engineer review, the contractor's review, that there was no significant damage to. Or or wear and tear on on Grandview that would. Change anything moving forward with this.
Mister Chair, that's correct. And Grandview Road was not used as part of that detour route at all.
Just cross.
Just, yeah, just just crossing through on on Westview. I think too, I I do just want to make the note that that with the detour, no construction truck traffic was put through that detour. That was used for residential vehicles, for for just the traveling public. All of the construction vehicles were kept on Valley Drive. So, you know, our regular passenger cars do not have, do not have a big impact on a hard surface road. When we see those larger loads, those those big, heavy, heavy trucks or equipment like that, that's that's where you might see some. Some kind of impact to a hard surface roads, but but not with our our day to day vehicles.
Thank you.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Where where are the mailbox located here?
We can, we can zoom in here and I believe they're on West.
They're on the corner of Westview and Grandview.
Yeah, we can zoom into that location if you'd like.
What addresses do they service? Just people on Grandview?
Mister Chair Commissioner, I'm I'm not exactly sure what all addresses are included in that specific cluster. Westview Road.
Westview Road, sounds like.
Thank you.
Okay, so so they're, they don't serve service anybody, any of the people on Lanning, for instance.
Mister Chair Commissioner, I don't know that. It sounds like Mister Brackman, who's going to probably speak during public comment, may be able to answer that specific question.
All right.
But it but it is local, obviously, to the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, and again, we're focusing on Grandview here. Grandview, that's the, that is the R I D. Ultimately, though, we've gotten a lot of other information about the surrounding project. So, okay, with that, we'll ask for public comment. So this is your time, Mister Brackman. If you'd state your name and address for the record, that'd be great. And then we'll give you the Florida.
Again, my name's Dale Brackman. I live at thirty two thirty two Grandview Road, north of East Helena. There's a few different opinions here that I'd like to bring up. As far as the mailbox question, there probably is maybe two or three mailboxes that are serviced at that corner. On people that live on Grandview, but all the rest of the mailboxes on that corner are for people that are on Westview. Because for fifty years, Westview was a dead end road, especially going south. And when it ends, when you go north at Lanning. So one of the subjects that was brought up was. If there was any damage done by the detour. And and the detour, I agree, did not have any heavy traffic on it. But what it did do is both Lanning and Grandview had no access to Valley Drive during that period of time. So if you take twenty eight properties on on Lanning and thirty some properties on Grandview. And you multiply that by two to three cars per property. All those cars had to come out onto Westview for that two and a half months period. Okay, so there was an impact. There's a difference of opinion on that. I also feel that since the county saved eighty thousand dollars on this project by putting a detour through our area. That that if they would pitch in five percent per road, Lanning and Grandview. To our R I D, that would be a beneficial thing, and I don't think it's too much to ask. In that case. I do have some contention about what they did on that road. When they opened the detour, it was basically they put a, the construction company put a notice on our doors. Saying that the road would be closed and the next day. And they did not do any improvements on Westview until after we complained. They did not do it before the detour was open. They only did it afterwards. So that's just a minor issue, but it is a difference of opinion here and a difference of facts. The other thing that I will say is that. Our Rural Improvement District has been handled as a unit. In other words, Lanning and Grandview have been done together, okay? One of the questions I have is, does anybody know when they're going to chip seal the new construction that they just did on Valley Drive? And if if that's going to be done in the next, this year or next year, a chip sealing, they could improve, they could include. Our our roads in that and maybe save some money that way. Then also. Let's see. I just was curious what the bid process is, because it used to be that they would. Put a public notice out there on in newspaper. I don't know if they do other other cities. I think a couple of times that we had contractors that were actually from out of out of state. I think one time it was Idaho and one time I think it was from Butte that that did the the R I D process. Because what I what I found out is that they they bid all the R I Ds that they're going to do that same year. They they do an invitation for bid. So when, for example, our last chip seal was two thousand nineteen. Jessica said it was two thousand twenty, but that apparently is a fiscal year. I was not aware of when the fiscal year starts and stops. So during that that R I D process, with the with the bid process, they included like. I think there was ten different R I Ds that were included in that bid process. So I was just just curious about that. Also, I have a contention with how often the chip seals are being done, okay? I have records that showed that we chip sealed in ninety two, ninety seven, oh, three, oh, nine. Fourteen and nineteen. That's five or six year cycles, not seven to ten that they want to do now. Also, that we have almost thirty thousand dollars in the R I D process between these two streets. And I was wondering if anybody knows what the proposed chip seal cost is right now. And and so if we already have thirty thousand dollars in there, we're not that far off as far as. Our our monies that we already have, okay? So those are all issues that I bring up. And then also, as far as the wear and tear on the road. In the thirty years that that our ideas existed, we've never had to have crack sealing done until this year. The road is always in good enough shape that they would just come in and chip seal every five to six years. So I would like to see that continued on that schedule for every five to six years, since that's what it has been. And the road is really in good shape. If you guys all drove that road, that's one of the better R I D projects out there. Now. Let's see here. Also, as far as the sweeping of the road, I'm not requesting sweeping the whole street. All I was requesting was sweeping the intersections there where the dirt road, West Westview. Crosses Grandview and also Lanning Road. When the construction company came and swept, they did a poor job. I complained about it back then. We got nowhere. They said they've left the area. It was telling us Santa Graville, they only are seven miles away. They could have came back and done a better job of sweeping. So I I I feel that they never did really meet the requirements of returning everything back to normal. So all I asked was Caleb earlier this year to come out and sweep that intersection, those two intersections. And as of now, that hasn't been done. So that's my only, my only complaint on that. As far as when they improved Westview, okay? Westview for fifty years had eight to ten people or eight to ten properties access that. So after the detour, I felt that it should go back to the eight to ten people. All the the property owners on that Westview using that road, not the whole general public. I I stand corrected that I thought these were private roads, and I I stand corrected that they are public roads, okay? But those items there, I think, should be addressed. I have a map here that shows that. Westview. The heading south off of Grandview ends at the Huntinger Property. There is no road anywhere that intersects Westview at that end of the road. Also, I have, the map shows that. The subdivision, Tree Rise Road ended at the Kissler Property. When the vigilante subdivision was added, they they annexed. The east end of Free Rise Road for approximately two hundred feet, and they paved that area. And what they did there was, part of the issue was that they needed to have. Control of water that was going to come down that way. So they actually changed the flow of the water to go into retention pond on that southeast corner. And that's the only reason that area was paved. There's no houses down there. It butts right up against the Huntinger Property. And and in fact, when you go out there, you see that the Huntinger fence. Covers half of that road at the very end, on the east end of Tree Rise. So that actually was only a utility easement for fifty years. There was not any traffic there. The detour opened that up. It's an unsafe intersection. Two cars cannot pass. It's a blind corner. We were all courteous during the 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 detour, but I feel that 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 issue. Now that road should be closed again because that road, Westview was never a maintained road. It can't handle the traffic. That's an unsafe corner. And I would just like to see it closed again. Now, the we have a difference of opinion on the on the the barricade that was there. I talked to Kevin Orr, which is the the. Public Works Director for East Helena, and he said there was a barricade there. And it was put in there by the construction, when when the construction was done. It was removed by somebody. I I assume the, the when the detour was established, it was removed. All I would like to see is that brought back up. It's a simple process. I feel we have a grandfather clause of fifty years of past practice that that wasn't, that was the dead end road. And I would like to see that become a dead end road again because it, we are impacted by that opening of that road. And and since we paid for the Rural Improvement District. Where other people are benefiting from our Rural Improvement District. Creates a lot of dust. Excuse me, it creates a lot more mud that comes out on the Grandview. And one of the reasons we did this real improvement was to get rid of mud and dust. And so I think. It's kind of a side subject, but it's it's important to us that live in the area to go back to the way it was. And I don't see any benefit of having that little thirty foot utility easement established as a road. It's an unsafe road. The traffic that comes down on Westview now thinks that they're the they're the main road. They come shooting across Grandview at thirty miles an hour. There's no, the county doesn't maintain anything out there. They won't put yield signs. So the the solution to that part of it is just to close it back off. Just put the barricade back up. There seems to be a difference of opinion whether there was a barricade, but I'm telling you there was, and that Kevin Orr verified it. Who put it up, who took it down is kind of irrelevant. Basically, we'd just like to see that part done. And as far as the assessment. I want to see the road continue to be maintained. I think that to to do it every seven to ten years is is not right. It's been done every five to six years. And if this assessment will accomplish that, then I'm I'm for the assessment. But I also feel that the assessment kind of is lagging behind. In other words, if if we've had increased costs over the years. Our assessment hasn't increased since two thousand and three, and I feel it's a big burden. To to raise it a hundred and twenty percent like they did. So I feel that there's some. Hindsight that should be addressed here too, but. I'll show you the maps I have.
Thank you, sir.
See that this is where Free Rise used to end. This is the Huntinger Property. And then this is where the vigilante subdivision had added there to there. Okay, this last little part there is thirty feet.
Yep.
That's what I have.
Thank you.
And I have one other map here. It's a little more detailed with the the property owner. And this here shows. This is the Huntinger Property, okay?
Thank you.
See this map? Same thing. The Westview went into his property and that ended. Free Rise ended right here. When vigilante developers added their section, they paved between here and here.
I think, I think we understand that. Do you want us to have these or you? Yeah, okay. Why don't you take that back? We we understand. I really want you to speak in the microphone so that you can be recorded. We don't want to miss any of this stuff for the record here, so. Thank you.
Anyhow, I'm not, I'm not trying to be an adversary here. I'm trying to to reestablish what we had as a neighborhood. And that was that the Westview only was accessed by the local people that lived on Westview. Not everybody and their dog. And then the high school traffic, all and the UPS, all those people now use that side road to get into the new subdivision. I feel it impacts our R I D.
Thank you.
My opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here and showing us your information. Okay, Jessica, a few questions came up there. How we do just go through them quickly. You probably have them written down, but the chip seal schedule, bid process. And how much is in the account, what that represents. And. Crack seal project, I think, was brought up. Five to six years versus seven to ten, those of those were all. We're, oh, heading for some water, okay.
Mister Chair Commissioner, I'd be happy to speak to some of those items. So as far as our bid process with the chip seal cycle. What we do is is take a look at all of our R I D roads that need chip sealed for any given year. We also combine that list with the list that the county has for county roads that are to be chip sealed for the year. And we combine those into one bid. And what that does is it gives us, you know, that economy of scale so that we can get the best price possible for that chip seal surface. This year, for example, I think we have over thirty miles of roads throughout the county with R I Ds and county roads being chip sealed. I think it's kind of a higher year, but that's generally how we do that process. We factor in about, you know, industry standard for the chip seal as that maintenance preservation coat on our herd surface roads. Is about every seven to ten years. Lanning Road and Grandview Road are double shot chip seal roads, so they do not have an asphalt mat. Instead, that initial improvement was a double layer of chip seal. So the chip seal, then a chip seal on top. And that was a really common, common practice. So the chip seal, then a chip seal on top. And that was a really common, um, common practice uh, decades ago for a new improvement. It was cheaper than asphalt at that time. Um, the maintenance on that is a seven year chip seal cycle. Uh, the roads in, for, for Lanning and Grandview um, have been done on those cycles that uh, Mr. Brackman mentioned. Uh, the last one being in twenty nineteen or our fiscal year twenty twenty, our fiscal year running from July first to June thirtieth each year. Uh, our intent is to do it in twenty twenty-six, which would be fiscal year uh, twenty twenty-seven to keep it on that seven year cycle. Another thing that Caleb has started to implement on our RIDs is more frequent, frequent crack sealing. Uh, so crack sealing is generally done, um, along with that, that chip seal cycle in the past. So every seven to ten years, the, the cracks get sealed and then you do that chip seal over top of it. What we found though, uh, is that more regular crack sealing through time uh, can help push out that chip seal cycle. Crack sealing is a much cheaper maintenance item. And it can help to stretch out those years between that chip seal being needed. And so what it does is it saves money over the long term. I don't think that we'd ever get past a seven year cycle on Lanning Road or Grandview Road, uh, just because of the nature of the, the surface that we're dealing with. However, um, generally speaking, crack sealing on an annual or every other year basis moving forward will help a lot of these roads, um, stay in better condition by preventing water from getting into those cracks, forming large potholes. And then needing that resurfacing, you know, at a, at a more frequent occurrence. You know, that, that chip seal cycle is, is by far the largest expense that we have on those hard surface roads. And so we're doing our best to be, um, you know, as innovative or I don't think it's innovative really crack sealing, but um, you know, as, as efficient as possible with the use of these funds, uh, moving forward. Uh, you know, we, we, I think, um, I don't think, but in talking with, uh, I don't think about this, what I'm gonna say, not generally. Uh, Caleb Marcus is of the opinion that these roads can, can go to that seven year cycle. Uh, they've been done every five, six, seven years in the past. Um, but I think there's a comfort there waiting until twenty twenty-six, as long as we are sealing those cracks in the meantime. I don't think that we are um, holding off on an assessment or, or, you know, shorting any kind of maintenance by doing so. It's in his best professional judgment that that's an appropriate cycle. What that also does is let us uh, increase this assessment rate to uh, one forty-four instead of even yet a larger increase to do this chip seal cycle in, let's say, twenty twenty-five. I, unfortunately, the chip seal in, from twenty twenty-two went up a hundred and fifty-four percent. I, nobody foresaw that, that type of inflationary increase, unfortunately. And with that alone, you know, that's just the chip seal. We're not talking about fuel or all of the other maintenance components that go into the maintenance of these roads. Those have all gone up. Uh, not a hundred and fifty-four percent, thank goodness, but um, you know, certainly a substantial increase has been seen just over the last couple of years. Uh, you know, as, as we um, come out of that pandemic. Um, I think speaking, uh, let's see. I think that helps with the chip seal, the crack seal and the bid process.
I'll ask a question there. So the chip seal, if, if we were to go to five years, for example, or even six years, that relates to the assessment then as well, because you're doing it more often. You'd have to either raise more money or, yeah.
True, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Assessment would be higher.
Exactly. Uh, and, and Mr. Brackman mentioned that between these two districts, they have about thirty thousand dollars. Uh, for whatever reason, these districts, um, though separate districts, had a combined um, RID fund where the, the money was going. Uh, we split that out uh, with the finance department, managed them as separate, just separate districts, because they are separate districts. That split was done proportionately based on road footage and the number of people paying in, because that is a little bit different for each district. Um, but, but generally pretty equal. They're about the same length. Um, Grandview has that additional loop. Uh, but there's also a couple additional benefiting properties there. Anyway, so those have been split out. Um, in twenty, let's see, twenty nineteen, that total chip seal was about twenty thousand dollars. I would say we're looking at at least, um, you know, forty thousand dollars for both of these districts to be chip sealed uh, at a minimum. Um, not knowing exactly what that price will be in twenty twenty-six, but assuming some inflationary factor as we move closer to twenty twenty-six, you know, forty, forty-five thousand dollars is, is probably what we're looking at uh, for that, that next price.
So a scenario as well, um, assuming the end of this summer maybe, or whenever we do our uh, everybody road chip sealing, if Valley Drive gets its chip seal post-construction and we were to chip seal Grandview and Lanning this year, it would be, one, before there, it's needed. Two, uh, the, the uh, RIDs don't have that much money in their, in their accounts to cover that chip seal this year, plus snow plowing and, and other things that would need to happen over the next couple of years. They would be short. Is that pretty?
Mr. Chair, that's absolutely correct.
The other brought up, so I just wanted to address it.
That's a really great point. Um, because of the way the county combines the RID roads for chip seal and the county roads for chip seal, we're seeing that economy of scale savings in that chip seal price. We're seeing one mobilization for the Helena Valley. So we're not, um, you know, to say that because, you know, the equipment's right there on Valley Drive will save in mobilization by doing Lanning and Grandview at that time, it's not necessarily true, because, you know, we aren't being charged for additional mobilization for each district because of the way we, we combine that project into one bid.
So Valley Drive is thrown in with all the other chip seals that we have planned for this summer already, right?
Right. Yes, that's correct.
Gotcha. All right. Um, I wanted to address that for sure. Uh, I think we're covered. Again, we're focusing on Grandview. There were some related issues which um, might have some comments about, but in terms of Grandview Road and this Road Improvement District, Commissioners, further questions?
Yeah, just um, a process thought here, if you can throw it out. The issue that we have here before us is Grandview.
Right.
We need to deal that with that separately. If there is anything to be done with Westview, that needs to be a new process that is started by the neighborhood out there is how to deal with it, whether it's blocking the road off or, or maintaining it better or whatever, that has to be a new process. Done by the, by the neighbors out there, uh, you know, initiated by the neighbors out there.
Commissioner, it would be if they wanted to form an, an RID. Um, I would suggest in the interim though, I'm just, guess we can go there now, but our, our Public Works Director's here, RID uh, Specialist is here as well. Um, just that we uh, a, agree to work with the neighborhood and East Helena. And if there are questions about uh, access in that point or safety or signage or whatever, that we would um, just enter into that conversation and see where we can be of assistance and where we might not be able to be of assistance, whatever. Now, the answer isn't always yes, that we can do something about it, but uh, we've always been willing to discuss uh, issues that the neighborhoods bring up about a road or an access or whatever it might be and uh, work with them and with uh, the neighboring jurisdictions to try and uh, come up with some solution, whether that's something we can help with or something, you know, they might have to form an RID or they might, East Helena might be interested in doing so, who knows? But that's a separate issue for sure, but I think we need to address it because it's come up and just ask our staff to um, look into it, I guess.
We really need to deal with the, the Grandview issue today. And, and, and then uh, to try to work out with the, with the neighborhood out there, how, how we deal with the Westview issue.
Are they gonna crack seal the rest of our, our loop?
Mr. Brackman, um, I, but they need you not to speak from the audience. We just can't do that. We have to have some form here and, and we're, but I hear your question from the audience about crack sealing, um, the loop, which I think has been uh, chip sealed, but maybe was not cracked. I don't know if it was or not, and that might be something that you can look into as well, Jessica.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, to answer the question, uh, the, the crack sealing is still underway. I just spoke with our uh, contractor that's doing that work. The project is not concluded yet. Um, I did look. It does seem that Grandview Loop had, did not have any crack sealing done on it. When I looked at it, I could see the weeds in the cracks. Um, so I'm gonna touch base with him. Um, Caleb Marcus, who's out on uh, paternity leave right now, uh, set up the cracks to be sealed for each district. I'm gonna, um, without bothering him, make sure that we had, address that appropriately and see where we're at for our numbers. And if that um, loop was intended to be added this year, or if it's waiting till next year, or exactly what the intent was. Uh, but, but please just know that the contractor is still uh, under contract. Uh, the crack sealing for our RIDs is still underway, and so that's an active contract right now. And if we need to have them come back and finish up in that, um, in that loop, we certainly can have that done this year.
Great, thank you. All right. All right. I think we've uh, discussed this pretty thoroughly. Back to the issue at hand. We are um, making a decision on resol- a resolution to levy and assess Grandview Road Improvement District as presented here. So Commissioners, let's focus on that for the moment for decision-making process. Um, thank you for answering those questions. Uh, is there anything further, Commissioner? Any questions? Okay, how about a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Grandview.
Okay, uh, Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight to levy and assess the Grandview Road Improvement District number nineteen ninety-one dash two tabled from our meeting of six thirteen twenty-four as presented by Jessica Maccas.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion?
I just, I just want to reiterate, I think, I think what we need to do is to solve, to solve the, you know, and complete the process on Grandview, which we're doing now. And then if we can, um, as an organization, help to try to deal with whatever needs to be done at Westview, if we can offer some help in either putting together another uh, district or, or uh, getting the, the, the neighborhood feel about blocking off Westview, if that's what they want to do, we can, we could, that could be approached separately, you know?
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Okay, I'd just like to say thank you to uh, Mr. Brackman for being here, as well as Jessica for answering all the questions. I think that in terms of the pure focus on Grandview and its needs over, over the years, I think there's consideration there and uh, for uh, different methods and ways and looking at it, I think that what we have is a pretty sound program. Um, and the fact is that the need for increased revenue in order to meet the needs of the district is evident, and so I will support the resolution. Um, in terms of the other things, Commissioner Rolfe, I won't go as far as you, but I would just say that ask our staff to look into it and see where we might be able to be of assistance, in terms of those other uh, issues that have been brought up. Um, anything further? All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Onto the next item on the agenda, which is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Granicus LLC. Did I say that right? Granicus?
Granicus.
Yes, welcome. If you'd introduce yourself for the record, please. And spell your last name.
Commissioners, my name is Nadine McCarty, Lead Administrative Assistant for the County Commission. M C C A R T Y. Before you this morning, as a contract with Granicus LLC.
Nadine, would you pull the mic down closer to your mouth? Thank you.
For their peak agenda management services. In March, a limited solicitation was conducted and three companies presented their products, of which Granicus LLC was chosen to be the best fit for our needs and budget. We were informed that the current, current agenda software, Novus, that we have used since tw- two thousand fourteen for our public meeting agenda and minutes, will no longer exist. And thus the reason for our solicitation to acquire a new software program. The contract will begin upon signature by both parties for an initial three-year term. The total contract term is not to exceed five years. The contract cost is thirty-eight thousand, five hundred, sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Staff recommends approval of the contract with Granicus LLC and authorize the chair to sign all contract documents.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners? And I'll just, in explanation, giving uh, Nadine a little bit of a hard time, because she's usually over there or not here, but taking care of us from different places. So it's great to see you behind the microphone and with us today, present, presenting. Um, Commissioners, no other questions? How about public comment on this item? Public comment? All right. Hearing no public comment, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I, I would um, move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Granicus LLC as explained by Ms. McCarty.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion? Thank you. Hope this makes your life easier as well. The agendas, yes. All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Commissioners, we are at that point in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.